Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Ward 6 City Council Candidate Forum. My name is Deb Brinkman, and I'll be your moderator this evening. Today's forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of St. Paul and is in partnership with the St. Paul Neighborhood Network. Adia Leads and Sustain St. Paul. The League of Women Voters St. Paul conducts candidate forums to provide the public with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to members of the public. The League is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters Minnesota and our local leagues post complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for the official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan or for political purposes. We believe the success of our city depends on the values, knowledge, and commitment of our elected officials. Thus, it's essential for the public to better understand the views, opinions, and commitments of people running for elected office. It is in this understanding that better equips voters with information to make informed voting decisions. We appreciate the candidates and the audience for taking the time to be with us tonight. Before we begin, I'd like to let you know that you all have cards on your chairs for writing questions to the candidates. Once you have a question, please hold it up, and a volunteer will come pick it up from you. Tonight's forum is for the candidates running for office for Ward 6 City Council. Welcome to Nelsi Yang. Gary Unger is also running for office. He is unable to join us this evening, but know that all viable candidates have been invited. Thank you all, or Nelsi, for participating tonight. The candidates participating in today's forum have all agreed to the forum rules, which were included in their invitation to participate. Today, with just one candidate, we'll have a little bit more of a conversational flow to this. We'll ask, continue to ask questions so that we'll maintain some, some structure around our discussion tonight. Each question will be about two minutes, or each answer will be about two minutes. We will accept more written questions during the forum. Questions during the forum, we need to be applicable to all candidates, nonpartisan, and must be on topics relative, relevant to the office. Once you have a question, please, again, please hold it up, and an usher will come collect it. Questions that are of a personal nature, embarrassing, hostile, or unclear in intent will not be asked. Similar questions may be consolidated, and questions may be edited for clarity or for brevity. Campaign literature, buttons, signs, clothing, or other campaign-related items are not allowed in the room, but information on candidates is available on the tables outside the studio. Please remain as quiet as possible so that everyone can hear. Please hold your applause until the forum has ended, so that candidates will have as much time as possible to answer your questions. Please place your cellphones on silent. Members of the media may be recording this forum for their own use, and the forum is being recorded by the St. Paul Neighborhood Network for viewing by the public. With that, we'll start with an opening statement. And again, we'll have two minutes for your opening statement. Thank you, Nelsi.
Thanks so much. Good evening, everyone. I am Nelsi Yang, and I currently serve as a council member in St. Paul Ward 6, which is in the east side of St. Paul. Just a little bit about me, I live in the greater east side with my husband and also my son, who is a year old and three months, and he is the joy of my life. I am a daughter of refugees. I am a former union steward representing the organizing unit at Take Action Minnesota. And at Take Action was the first time that I was able to host a workshop in partnership with the League of Women Voters. And it was a workshop around restoring the, restoring voter rights to people who have been formerly, who have been formerly incarcerated. And that bill recently passed, and so I'm so, so proud of that. It was, you know, it's just a lot of reflection that I have as I think back to where my, where I was prior to elected office and where I am now. And like so much of the reason why I am here today as an elected official, as a council member, is because of my personal story and seeing the hardships that my family went through and that I went through. My parents, they came here as refugees and started life from scratch and, you know, did what they were supposed to do and working hard. And I, I grew up seeing them make poverty wages their entire lives during the recession. Our house got foreclosed. And I just remember feeling in my heart, this is just not okay. Like in a, in a country where we are so wealthy, where we live in abundance, there's no family who should have to live without. So those are the experiences that I carried with me to kickstart me into organizing for a world rooted in racial, gender, economic, and climate justice, to make sure that people, especially those who are marginalized in our communities, are at the center of all decision-making. And I ran for office in 2019 because I knew that these were not values that my own council member carried, but that I could deliver on them. And so I ran for office and we wanted, running for reelection to make sure that we continue on all the progress we've been able to build these past four years.
Thank you, Nelsi. You're welcome. Okay, our first question is, what are the greatest needs in your ward, and how would you work to address them and to ensure that those who need help get it?
I'm very passionate about housing because I know how important it is for people to have a roof over their head, to make sure that they have a safe place to go to every single day, every single night, and that, that is their place of sanctuary. And so for me, coming into the city council, it was always a priority to make sure that we are investing money into deeply affordable housing. I think so much about the conversations that I have with many residents on the campaign trail back in 2019, even to this day, who are always worried about how they will be able to pay for rent, how they will be able to keep, you know, living in the housing that they're in now. And many of them are families who are struggling financially on a daily basis. Their wages are not going up, or they're on fixed income. And like, these are the realities that we have to continue centering. It's why deeply affordable housing has been such a huge priority of mine, and I'm so proud that during my first term, the St. Paul City Council and also Ramsey County partnered to put over $74 million of our American Rescue Plan dollars into deeply affordable housing, and that's 30% AMI housing. And so this is for, this is housing that impacts and houses our lowest-income families, and I will continue being a champion for this in my second term.
Thank you. We'll have a couple more questions on housing, as long as it's a great passion of yours. What do you see as the most promising strategies to increase the supply of affordable housing in St. Paul?
Well, I think the folks who know this best are the folks from Sustain St. Paul who are in the room here today. And this is really, this really comes down to policy changes that we are so excited to have in St. Paul. One of the things that people are so motivated about is really making sure that on their lots, they can have accessory dwelling units. And so there's lots that are very, very large in size, but then because of the very traditional status quo policies that we have, where it really determines you only being able to have one home on a single lot, like this just really, really constrains us from being able to get the type of housing supply that we need in St. Paul. So for us to be able to change these policies and make sure that we modernize them, we also make sure that they reflect what we need in order to build more housing. Like this is what change, progressive change looks like. And so I'm really excited to, to champion that. And I feel like it's really important for us to be moving into that direction, especially with a once-in-a-lifetime development site happening in my ward, which is the former Hillcrest Golf Course. That's where we will be building 1,000 new housing units, which is a mixture of high-density homes, apartments, townhomes, single-family homes, row homes. And we need to make sure that we build as much housing as possible to keep making sure that St. Paul is a place where folks can live in and can move into and, and thrive in also.
That's great, Nelsi. A little bit different twist on, on housing, but on the building area as well. How can we keep TIP financing from negatively impacting future generations?
I think it's really important for us to always be really careful about when we do use this tool, and I won't go into the details about TIP, just because it is such a complex system. What matters to me is that, at the end of the day, we are continuing to, to operate on systems that do not take away from our public school systems and also hurt our communities and displace families. And so whenever we do have any sort of considerations on using TIP in the city of St. Paul, it's important to me that that is done in collaboration with partners in our city, making sure that we have the, the best information in front of us, so that council members can make the most informed decisions.
Great, thank you. Would you support, I know owning property is, is always really important, but we always have, you know, a, a large population of renters. So would you support an ordinance to enhance tenant protections in the city of St. Paul?
Absolutely. This is one of the priorities that I ran on in my 2019 race and continue to be passionate about and fight for to this day. When we, when the council considered repealing our tenant rights ordinance, I voted against that, and I was willing to take that to court all the way, because I, I know that it's actually policies like this that do get challenged by the status quo. And then in order for us to make systemic change, radical change in our system, so that it actually works for the people that it disenfranchises and marginalizes, we've got to be willing to challenge all of it, no matter what sort of barriers that we come through. And so I am really determined that in our second term, we will have council member, more allies at the council who will champion this also, so that we can get another version of our tenant rights ordinance passed.
Great, thank you very much. When it comes to our, our neighborhoods, when the city repairs the street, there's an opportunity to redesign streets to reduce traffic speeds and increase the safety for pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers. Would you champion policies to encourage redesign considerations?
Yes. This is what we have needed at Wiper Avenue for the longest time. Wiper Avenue is a huge business corridor in my ward, and I am just shocked at how divested it has been historically. And so coming into the council, I named it right away to the county that this is a priority street. They have to put as number one on their list. And I'm so proud that my very strong ally, county commissioner, my Chang Zhong, has named that as one of her top priorities. So we are working together to make sure that Wiper Avenue is redesigned, that any chance that we get in redesigning streets and prioritizing pedestrians and bikers, that we do that. And so Arcade Street is also another example of that, too. The state is working on redesigning it, and, and even though, as a city, we, we are not the decision-makers in this, it's important to me that we have always played a role in being partners and centering our residents and the people who come and travel and work and play in St. Paul.
That sounds great. Can you talk a little bit more about the use of some of the properties, possibly? The question is, our zoning, our current zoning policies prohibit retail stores, coffee shops, restaurants, and other, and other neighborhood businesses in residential areas, so a mixed zone, mixed-use zoning. So would you support zoning changes to support this?
Yes, I am very supportive of this, and we really need this in the east side of St. Paul, where we do know that not, you know, not all households have the means to be able to get to where they need to easily. So making sure that whether it's a grocery store, a cafe, or just a place where they need to go for goods and services is easily accessible to them and walkable, too, that is really, really important. And so I say this as a council member who has represented a part of St. Paul, where we have the highest income disparities, there are large households living together, like by, by these sort of changes happening, it will drastically improve the lives of the people who live in the east side. And so I'm really excited to figure out ways that I can continue partnering with organizations to make this happen.
That sounds great. A little bit more on getting around St. Paul into the neighbor, in the neighborhoods that you've talked about. The question is, the city of St. Paul is currently preparing an update to the St. Paul Bicycle Plan, and it has a focus on grade-separated bikeways and a more seamless connected network. Do you support this effort?
Well, I, I really love the idea of making sure that we have separated bike pathways. To me, that this is always the way that would ensure that our bikers have safety. And I think a lot about like my experience as a new mom, like one day I would love to be able to take my son out and bike, and I would want to make sure that, that I don't have to worry about cars, you know, coming and hitting us, or even just like, you know, steering off into the wrong lane. And so making sure that we do have physical barriers in place to create safety for bikers is really important to me. These are also the desires of the people who I heard come and testify about their support for Summit Avenue Trail 2, which is a project that I supported on the city council. I feel like the more that we can continue creating a city that is, that is centered around families, centered around our littlest ones, is how we can make sure we are building a community of care.
That sounds great. Again, still more about the neighborhoods and everything that we've got going on. This one has to do with the I-94 corridor. The question is, what elements of a future corridor would you support? I'll read the whole question now, so you understand the context. "The future of the I-94 corridor, which runs through the heart of St. Paul, is currently being reconsidered by Mindot through the Rethinking I-94 Project, Sustain St. Paul, and many others that believes that the city deserves a future corridor that addresses historical harms that, that were impacted by nearby neighborhoods, but that improves city connectivity across the highway and reduces vehicle miles traveled and associated vehicle pop, pollution, excuse me." Some examples include maybe an Actrade Boulevard, a land bridge, a transit-only lane, or reducing the number of vehicles lanes on the street with. So can you talk about what element of a future corridor would you support?
What I love about Rethinking I-94 is that this is truly a campaign that has been crafted by community members, especially people who have been hurt the most by the construction of this highway. It has torn apart so many families, taken generational wealth, especially from our Black community. So it's really important that, as St. Paul works toward reparations, we also really listen to our communities, especially those who have been hurt most by decisions made historically. And I feel like that we are at a point where there's so much support for that, where even now, like we also have a commission rooted in reparations. And so I'm really excited to get that work started. In terms of the project itself, I've, I am in solidarity with the community organizations and the people who have been at the front lines of pushing for a land bridge, pushing to make sure that we are having the most sustainable changes to the highway possible, which is, you know, I would say a huge, huge reduction in everything that's happening there, making sure that we have, we are incorporating nature. We're also figuring out ways how we can even reduce lanes there, too, and, and centering communities around it, and also finding ways to, to intersect wealth and business development there, too, because there have been a lot of businesses who have had to close down because of this, because of this highway.
Great. All right. The next question is, do you support St. Paul's current rent control ordinance? It caps increases at 3% annually, or, or the builder would seek an exemption? If not, what would an ideal policy look like?
I am very supportive of rent control in St. Paul, even when I wasn't on the ballot. And the campaign was, was up and running and collecting signatures from community members. I actually utilized my campaign as a vehicle to collect signatures and to engage with renters and make sure that we got rent stabilization on the ballot, and it passed. And so to me, I want to make sure that we, we really restore the ordinance that was voted on by our voters, which is really keeping to a 3% cap in increases for rent, and, and really, really allowing the community to decide what sort of policies, policy changes, whether it's around exemptions, or, you know, any additional changes that they want to see. I think that it's important to, to, to let our community be in the driver's seat for that. A lot of the amendments that we have seen to our ordinance has been staff-led. It's also been done without the voices of the people who were actually campaigning on the ground for this and without the voices of renters. And so I see our next council coming in as the huge opportunity we have to really restore community voices in this policy and make sure it continues protecting renters the way that we intended to.
Okay. The next question is a little bit more of an elaboration, similar. Many residents feel that their input on significant neighborhood decisions is not genuinely considered, or that outcomes are predetermined and engagement efforts are simply a box to check off. As our prospective city council representative, how will you enhance the public engagement process to ensure a more meaningful community involvement in decisions with long-term implications?
Well, one of the things I have loved so much about my campaign trail overall is that it is very informed by my experiences as a person of color, as a daughter of refugees who grew up not being politicized, or in other words, politically involved at all. So as I do my work in city hall, this is, those are experiences that I continue to hold and continue to allow to shape my work, which is that even, you know, in my official capacity as a council member, I have a commitment to keeping my campaign up and running, so that it is the vehicle that I have to continue engaging with the people I represent. It is also a vehicle for deep leadership development, too, because I really believe that we are in a movement. We are in a movement to fight for racial justice, economic, gender, and climate justice. And so one day, even if it isn't me up here anymore, well, we still need leaders who are going to be here championing those important issues. And so they are also the people who are carrying this work forward and engaging with our residents, making sure that they are centered and included in decision-making in St. Paul, and that's what I will continue to do throughout all of my work.
Thank you. How can St. Paul be a leader in protecting our LGBTQ+ neighbors?
What I am really proud about is that we do live in a city that is a sanctuary for our LGBTQ+ community, and I have, I feel like, you know, just, this is a realization I continue to get as I go to conferences where elected officials from across the country come together. Like I was recently in Missouri for a Local Progress Conference, which is an organization representing many progressive elected officials. And, you know, with a lot of, a lot of what has been happening in Missouri, where they are passing legislation to make it harder for LGBTQ+ folks to get access to resources, to even call Missouri a home, like St. Louis was an example of a city that, you know, made sure that their city was a sanctuary, even amongst what was happening at the state level. And so I feel that we are a leading champion in this also, and I would really love to continue engaging with our LGBTQ+ community members about what sort of policies or what sort of programming they would love to see us initiate at the city level, or, you know, making sure that St. Paul continues to be a champion for legislation at the state level. Like those are things that I feel we have always been, been at the front lines of and will continue doing.
Thank you. A little bit more simpler. Would you please explain what the city council does, what policy areas that the council can address, and what do you see as your role on the city council if elected?
Can you repeat that again?
Mm-hmm.
I want to make sure I get all of the pieces to it.
Would you please explain what the city council does, what policy areas the city council addresses, and what you see as your role on the city council if elected?
The city council holds a lot of responsibilities. I feel like the top two is that we, we review the proposal that we get from the mayor on how tax dollars should be spent within our city. And then we can also make amendments to it. We are the ones who approve what a final version of the budget would look like. And so this is really, really important. We, to me, it's, it's even more important that we have council members who are champions for working-class people, who are champions for LGBTQ+ folks, young people, working, and also, you know, seniors, because our budget is really a reflection of the values that we hold in our city. And so council members are not only a champion, but also a safeguard for what we want our city to look like. And so the, the other thing, too, is that we can pass ordinances at the city level, which basically are city rules that you have to follow. And so again, it just, this just really speaks to the importance in making sure that council members truly reflect what our communities need. And to me, you know, being a champion for our communities that have been marginalized has always been really important, because I have, I know what it feels like to be on the end where we get the shorter end of the stick. And so to me, this, my work is about uplifting everyone, making sure that we create a city where everyone can thrive. The role that I feel I have at the city council is, well, this work is really, really important to me. And so to me, I, I put everything that I have into all that I do, and make sure that every opportunity I get, it is to really, to really keep building toward that vision where everyone can thrive. And I see everything that I do as an opportunity to keep inviting people into that movement, too.
Thank you. We talk, let's talk just a little bit about funding. Are you in favor or against the 1% tax referendum on the ballot?
I'm in support of it. We are in a state in our city where we really need more funding to be able to, to rebuild and even like maintain our infrastructure, from our roads to our bridges. I have learned so much about this during my first term of the council, and I, you know, to me, like with getting the facts, the data, and really understanding like how divested our, our maintenance has been on infrastructure. To me, one, it's been really disappointing, because I feel like as a council member coming into this work, I'm really inheriting everything that happened before me. And then I have a duty to figure out, how do we get out of this situation? How do we, how do we become problem solvers in this? And fill such a huge financial gap to make sure that our city is a city that is, can, that can continue to be here for many generations, and people can travel and get to wherever they need to. And so the, the city sales tax increase is going to be significant to us, because that's how we can generate the funds that we need. And additionally, one of the reasons why I care deeply about making sure it passes is that this is a way in which non-St. Paul residents can pay into improving our city. Right now, there's so much burden on our residents to be the ones who generate that, that revenue, you know, mostly on their own. And so we cannot keep increasing those property taxes. We have to be really creative in how we can bring in more money. And with St. Paul having a lot of properties that are tax-exempt, this is, you know, one of the many ways in which we can make sure that folks who don't live in St. Paul but benefit from our city are paying into this and improving our city as a whole, too.
Thank you. Should the 1% sales tax referendum fail, how would you propose funding the needed street repairs and park maintenance? Will you support a moratorium on any new park projects until current maintenance needs are met?
That's an interesting question. I don't think that that's the answer, a moratorium on, on parks or other projects. I feel like this is something that requires more discussion. And so in a situation like that, I feel it would be really important to pull together council members, mayor's office, other stakeholders, to really figure out, how can we problem-solve in this situation? And also make sure that the other projects that are very important get funded at the same time, too. And I, I feel like in situations like that, then it also really challenges other levels of government to play their part, too, and do more to invest in our cities. And I feel like that's the moment that we are in now, and we have needed it for a long time, because cities have not equitably received the local cities have not equitably received the local government aid that they deserve. And so I, I hope that this, this moment is just, you know, another reminder about how much more we need to keep supporting our cities so that they can thrive.
Thank you. Voluntary assessments have worked in other cities. If elected, would you support voluntary assessment of nonprofit and religious institutions?
I'm not really sure what you mean by voluntary assessments, like, is that something similar to pilot, which is payment in lieu of taxes?
I think this is intending that one of these institutions could maybe help fund a project that would maybe, that they're interested in. That's my understanding of how this assessment would be applied.
Okay. It's the first time I've heard that term, so I think there's a lot of learning for me to still do, if that is a, a concept out there that is being discussed, and I'm very open to it. I think overall, I understand that our nonprofits, religious institutions, they, they do a lot to give back to our communities, but at the same time, we are a city that is the capital city in St. Paul, and there are a lot of revenue that we need to generate to maintain our city. And so any, any different methods that we can pursue to make sure that organizations, nonprofits, whatever institution it is, they are playing an even bigger role to be a part of that is what I'm really interested in.
Thank you. Do you support reparations, and if yes, where would the funds come from?
Absolutely. I support reparations and have been at the beginning of this work, coming into the council, and was also a huge, huge supporter, making sure that we, that the council successfully passed this too and got the commission up and running. The funds for this, I think that there's so many different ways, like, to answer this, like, it could be funding that we use directly from our general fund to, for, for this work. It could be special funds too. I also see philanthropy being a huge role in this also, because I know that there is a national movement about, around this. Many organizations, and people-led organizations especially, are really passionate about this, and I feel there's a role to play in a private and public relationship. I am also really hopeful that we can get more government entities involved in this too, so that this can really be funded by, by all different revenues and resources possible. It is a collective effort. St. Paul did not get here alone at all, but really because of move, of a movement that was built and led directly by our Black community. And so I'm really excited for this work and excited to see it expand.
Thank you. What are your ideas on how to best address crime in St. Paul?
I feel like the, whenever I get asked this question, I always think about my own experience growing up and, and what safety looked like for me, and also, again, being a new mom too, what does a safe community look like for my son? And what I have, what I know to be true is that communities that have seemed to feel safest are the ones where people have enough. People have enough, and they don't have to worry about how they're going to fill a gap in their household, or figure out how to find food, how to pay for rent. They also have places to go to in their community, where if they want to go play, if they want to go swim, they can easily do that. It's accessible to them. They don't have to figure out, okay, how am I going to make a, a 10-minute trip to get to where I need to go? It's just easily done. So to me, what that means is, safety is about having enough. It's about thriving. It's about accessibility, and it's also about making sure that, you know, folks who are working and making living wages, getting great workers' benefits, and that our schools are in a really great place to give our, our kids all that they deserve. And so to me, this is the vision of safety that I have and that I have always been working towards in my term on the council. Even before I was a council member, I was working toward this too. And so I'm really excited to make sure that in St. Paul, a community that is abundant in working-class folks, immigrants, refugees, that they get their fair share. It's been divested for way too long. We have the most outdated public facilities in our ward, and so getting our two rec centers and our library renovated, rebuilt are huge goals of mine, and also making sure that we continue being a really strong partner with our schools is huge for me too, because we also know that strong schools also build strong families. And so these are the first priorities that come to mind for me.
Thank you. The next one is, go back to our streets and our neighborhoods. Snow plowing needs improvement. Oftentimes, residential streets go days after a snow plow, or after a snow event, and by the time the plow comes through, the snow is already packed down, so the plowing has little to no effect. How will you work to ensure that our city's streets are plowed in a more timely manner?
My staff members and also my campaign team members are probably the best people who can tell you how often they come upon this as an issue from a resident. It is seriously the number-one issue that we hear. And I took it upon myself to work with our neighbors who are reaching out and said, let's pull together a meeting and invite our Public Works Director to it, so that he can also hear from our residents and get inspiration for our house now operations can be improved. I know we are a big city, but we can also improve, because winter is here every single season, and we just cannot keep doing the same thing. So from, from the work that we've done this entire year, like, we're really excited to just be persistent in this, because we know that making big systemic change, sometimes it does take time. It takes will especially, and we have the will, and so we are explore, you know, we're really excited about exploring a few different things. Like, this past winter season, there was a very short-term experiment, I would say, where we had one-sided parking throughout the city of St. Paul. There's been a lot of support for that, and so the neighbors who I'm working with are really interested in figuring out, well, what does a one-sided parking rule in St. Paul look like during the winter season? Other cities have done it, so maybe we can try to figure out what might work for St. Paul too. And so I, I know that some, you know, that could be an option. I also recognize that it, this is a really huge, this comes down to parking also, because if people are, if we don't have the best rules around parking, and at the same time, folks aren't moving their cars too, we can't get to the snowplow that we can choose, that we need to. And so I think it's a larger conversation, conversation that doesn't just take one solution, but those are some of the different options that I've been hearing from people that they feel appetite on.
Thank you. Can you describe a time when you had to compromise in order to solve a problem?
That's, that's a really great question. I, I feel like I have to really think about that. I think, like, for me, the, the one thing that comes to mind is when we were working on a, well, there was conversation about a truck parking ban in the city of St. Paul. This happened recently this year, so basically not having semi-trucks park. There, there was consideration for a complete ban for semi-trucks in the city of St. Paul, so that they can't park on, you know, our city's streets. And this was really, this was, it was important for me to be really considerate around this, because I knew that the ban would heavily impact people who are immigrants and refugees and people of color who work in the trucking industry. And so despite the ban passing, I still feel there's a lot of work to be done, because we still continue to hear from truck drivers who really struggle in finding a place to park in our city and just be able to do their work. And so I, I think that there's ongoing conversations that have to happen. I also see an opportunity for us to be pulling in college institutions, maybe places that have parking lots that are pretty much empty after business hours, to have that be like a temporary place for trucks to park. So I, I feel like this is something that I have to put onto my list for the second term, for my second term, and see, you know, where our council members at in wanting to, to do this in a way that is equitable, because again, at the end of the day, the people who are also most impacted by it are our communities of color, immigrants and refugees from the ban.
Thank you. What are your transportation policy priorities?
So to me, what's really important is, in the East Side, is really investing in public transit, and this is because we are a community that has a, a lot of family members who are low-income, who don't have, who don't own a car, and maybe like, you know, their most common way of transportation or getting to where they need to is by walking, by biking. And so to me, it's important that if, you know, they want to travel far, they also have many great connections. I'm really excited about the Purple Line project that is coming into my ward. It is a, we'll, we'll have a dedicated bus lane for this bus line, and so to me, it's really important that we have this on White Bear Avenue, because White Bear Avenue is a huge, huge connector in my ward, is also a business corridor, so we can get more foot traffic and, and support more of our small businesses who are along that business corridor all at the same time. But it's also really important that White Bear Avenue gets redesigned, and so this project will create even more urgency for the county to be prioritizing this and making White Bear Avenue safer, especially for our pedestrians and folks who are using public transit.
Thank you. This is the last question that I have on the sheet, and after we answer this question, we'll go to, to closing remarks, so you can cover any other topics that we might have missed. What are your environmental policy priorities?
So I'm really excited about the Heights, which is the former Hillcrest Golf Course development at my, in my ward. I feel like it's a huge reflection of the world that we should be living in, where it is renewable energy that we are investing in, and that even the way that homes are built too is done in a way that is really sustainable. We intend for the Heights to be the nation's first carbon-neutral site. There's been a lot of energy around having geothermal, a geothermal system at the Heights also, and so this is just, I feel like, a snapshot of the world that we should be building toward, and so I'm, I'm really excited for the Heights to be a project that embodies all of this, because it is what I believe in. And as somebody who grew up in a poor family, like, as I discover more about, like, my own personal story around climate, I recognize even more that I am amongst those people who bore the brunt of climate injustices, because we know it is folks of color, it is our low-income families who are hurting most from our climate injustices today. And so I'm really excited for that project overall. It's going to be huge for our East Side community, and we'll work hard to make sure that we meet those goals.
Thank you. So now we'll just go into our closing remarks, and you can have two minutes for those as well.
Thank you. It's been a joy being a council member these past four years. I never would have imagined myself being here at all, and it's really just, to me, really eye-opening. Whenever, you know, young people especially, when I go and speak in classrooms, they ask me, well, did I always imagine myself being here? The answer is no. I, growing up, did not see myself as a leader, because when I did see political ads on TV, it wasn't people who looked like me that I saw on the screen. But I really believe that in order for us to, to be, you know, a leader, to be like who we envision ourselves to be, we've got to have trailblazers. And so, you know, I, I see myself as somebody who is trailblazing a world in which young people, in which women of color, you know, folks who grew up in a, in a poor family, they can actually do this. And, and it's just really exciting to, to now be in elections, in an election cycle where we have even more diverse folks running for office. And so I'm really excited for the future of our city, for the future of the East Side. And again, I'm running for city council, because there is still so much work for us to accomplish these next four years, and I'm really determined and eager to continue doing that with our East Side families, to bring them along and continue engaging with them, and making sure that City Hall is a place that is approachable to them, a place that is the people's home, because it should be and it will always be. And so I'm really, you know, asking for folks to come out and vote for me and support me as your first choice for a city council. Early voting starts on September 22nd, so you can start voting by mail or in person then, and Election Day is November 7th. And so if folks need support with voter assistance, they can always reach out to my campaign. My campaign website is nelseyayne.com, and that's where you can get in touch with me and my team, and also we can have more conversations there too. So again, thank you all for having me here today. It was a pleasure, and I look forward to seeing everyone again.
Thank you. This concludes this evening's program. As Nelsee said, the general election is November 7. Early voting begins September 22nd. Thank you for, Nelsee, for running and for, for Gary for running. It's so important for voters to have a choice. I encourage everybody to make time out of their schedule to, to go and vote. So thank you very much, and have a wonderful evening.
Thanks, everyone.